Okay. So, welcome back. This is the public hearing for the Thurston County 2019-2020 biennial operating capital budgets. We'll resume with the four o'clock portion of today's hearing. And we have the general government, which covers the assessor's office, the auditor's office, the commissioner's office, treasurer's office, human resources department, and central services department. And I didn't know if you had any additional background you'd like to just touch on, Robin or Romero, since we resumed. If not, we'll go forward with the rest of it.
So, thank you, Commissioner. We are just going to begin right along at this time with our offices and departments this afternoon for general government. And again, I thank the elected officials and department directors who have come today to answer any questions we may receive from the public. So, we'll start with the office of the assessor. And just for the information of anyone who may be following along, and by the way, these slides are online, so they can find them on the budget website. But what we'll do this afternoon, just like earlier today, is I will give a very high-level overview of the office or department, and then ask the chair to call for public comment. And then, as soon as that's done, we'll move right along to the next office, and it goes pretty fast. So, starting with the office of the assessor. Assessor Stephen Drew is with us this afternoon. Thank you for joining us today. The assessor's office appraises property values and maintains property information for the entire county. What the board has funded for next biennium, that's a change from this biennium, is there is funding for safety and protective gear for field appraisers. The general fund budget for the assessor is roughly $4.3 million in each year from the general fund, and $4.4 million in total. And the difference is that the assessor has a small amount of REIT technology fund that they used, and that is the assessor's budget.
Okay. Great. Any comments or questions?
No.
How about you?
No.
No? Is there anyone in the public that'd like to come forward to testify on behalf of what the assessor's budget? Seeing no one, does the assessor have any comments they'd like to come to the podium and make?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. So, you know, a citizen might have asked, if they'd spoken with me, why am I disappointed in the budget that was approved for my office? And so, I don't want to address that, because I am disappointed. We were asked, the three general government offices were asked to align priorities with the strategic plan, to agree on a funding plan for the allocated amount, which was $75,000, to be divided amongst the three offices, and then to strive to share resources to support strategic initiatives. We did that. We submitted a prioritized list, which totaled the $75,000 allocation. And the list ultimately has been recommended for approval, except that not number seven, but number two on that list was reduced by $10,000. And that, number two on that list that we agreed was our number-two priority, was $20,000 in general fund dollars in order to accompany the annual inflow in REIT dollars. The combination of those two amounts would be a sustainable, through the biennium, amount to fund an FTE, which currently exists in my office. That is, to retain the FTE in a sound fiscal manner. And sadly, for, I still don't understand the reasoning behind it, $10,000 was reduced from that number-two priority for general government. So, I would ask that it be restored. I would ask that it be restored, because it's sound fiscal policy to restore it, and I would ask that it be restored, because not doing so puts my office in a situation in two years, should we have a budget freeze, to need an increase. That is, it would not be a, simply a carry-forward budget that would be sustainable into the next biennium. I would need to have an increase to retain an existing and vital FTE. And then, just in closing, the slide does say that we have 32 FTEs. That's very true. We're able to get our work done just barely with those 32 FTE, because we cut management to a ratio of about 1 to 10, and we're still six FTE below where my office was in 2008, two years before I took office. So, we're doing everything that we can to most economically get the job done, and do so with the highest quality and commitment to customer service. Losing an FTE will make that impossible. Thank you.
Thank you for your words. Do you have any comments?
No.
All right. Okay.
Well, yeah, I do have a comment or a question of the assessor.
Sure.
And you explained it to the board, to the public, since you're addressing the public as well. And as I recall, the initial ask was for $10,000, and then it was bumped up double to $20,000. We reduced it to 10, and the rest of the, that salary for that employee is being paid out of, that position is paid out of the REIT tech fund?
Yes.
And the REIT tech fund is drying up or dwindling down? Can you explain that?
So, when, before your time, Commissioner, but when we created this FTE, we did so in the year that the statute, state statute changed the prioritization for use of REIT funds, of this portion of REIT funds, and said that it can be used for maintenance of the treasurer's paperless REIT software, which it is used for, and for appraisal system, which was defined as, by legal opinion, as personnel hardware and software. At that time, there was a standing balance in the REIT fund, which enabled us in the last biennium to fund it entirely with REIT dollars. And we knew that. It was transparent when we asked for it, that the inflow is less than the cost of the FTE. But at that time, we had a standing balance of about $200,000, and we were receiving $40,000 to $50,000 a year in REIT, and so it was absolutely sustainable. As we get to this point in the drawdown of that balance, it ceases to be, I would submit, you know, sound fiscal policy to drive that number to zero, because the REIT, when the REIT money comes in, and when the salary money needs to go out, can create complication. And so, that was the reason for my request. Initially, I asked for what in the first year would be, I think, about $10,700. It was based upon, I don't have that number, but it's roughly that, was based upon an HR forecast of salary and benefits for the one year. And we asked for that amount, even though it does not get us to a sound fiscal level, because at the time, the aggregate requests from the three offices were somewhere in the $300,000 range. And that was my request from my office. When we got farther into the process, there was adequate money within the $75,000, and it was agreed by the three offices to increase the amount to $20,000, based on the explanation I gave earlier.
And that $20,000, if it were increased by 10, we give you the $20,000. That would be good for two-year period?
That would not only fund the FTE through the two-year period, but it would not create a cliff immediately following this biennium.
So, how would that position be funded, then, in 2021 and beyond?
So, the inflow, the best way to answer that is the inflow is somewhere conservatively about $42,000, and in a good year, around $55,000. And the FTE is somewhere around $75,000, something like that. And so, if we go four years out, or 15 years out, it's the cost of the FTE less the $40,000 to $50,000 in REIT, and the rest is general fund. And I submit that that's the way that we can most utilize the non-general fund money every year to provide an important FTE and reduce the general fund cost.
But it's still, it'll be a hit on the general fund eventually?
Yes.
Okay.
But we'd need the entire FTE funded by general fund, sir, if we didn't have the REIT money to work with in order to get our work done.
Good point. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. And I'll move on to the auditor's office, and did you have any comments, Robin?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. The office of the auditor, auditor Mary Hall is with us today. Thank you for being here. So, the office of the auditor has many responsibilities. Again, it's a very high-level overview of some of the core services that this office provides. Excuse me. The auditor runs elections. They have recording and licensing. County financial services are provided in the office of the auditor. Updates to revenue and indirect cost rates are also part of the duties of the auditor's office. Next biennium's budget includes funding to increase voter outreach, to provide for prepaid postage for voter ballots, authorizes purchasing of new equipment for ballot processing, that's from a restricted account, and also adds project positions for legal document imaging process. That is in, also from a restricted fund, and there are two project positions. So, when you look at the details below, you see the FTEs go up by two, and that's to take care of recording fees. Not recording fees, but the document project. So, in the general fund, the budget for the auditor is $6.5 million in 2019 and $7 million in 2020. Part of the reason that those costs go up significantly is due to election costs in a presidential election year. And then, the total budget, $7.5 million in 2019 and $7.9, almost $8 million in 2020. The restricted funds in the auditor's offices, the auditor's MNO for record preservation election reserve, and the election stabilization reserve, which we maintain so that the cost of election to the general fund is predictable over time, and we put money into the reserve that in a presidential year, we pull back to the general fund, and that helps to stabilize the entire budget. So, that's the auditor's office.
Great. So, I'll turn to the audience and see if there's anyone in the general audience that'd like to come to the podium to address the auditor's budget. Seeing no one, is there any comments from the auditor? Do you wish to make any comments at the podium at this moment?
Not unless you have any questions.
Questions?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. So, the commissioner's budget is next.
Yes. Moving on to the office of the Board of County Commissioners. The commissioner's office is, of course, the three of you are elected, and we have county manager Romero Chavez. The duty of the Board of County Commissioners is to enact county laws. You set the county budget. You monitor county funds and oversee the departments that are led by appointed directors. Those are the core duties of the commissioner's office. There is, of course, a lot more that you all do. This budget is quite heavily, as you see below, funded by restricted funds. And the list of restricted funds in the commissioner's care are detention sales tax, trial court improvement projects, the stadium and convention center fund, which funds tourism projects, conservation futures, communications or E911, that's a direct pass-through to TCOM 911. You have a public education and governmental account, also known as the PEG fund, that can only be used for equipment that creates access by the public to their government. There is the tourism promotion area fund, that is, again, a direct pass-through to the TPA and the VCB, Visitor and Convention Bureau, to fund tourism projects. There is the historic preservation fund, the jail capital project fund, the real estate excise tax funds, REIT 1 and REIT 2, that can only be used for county infrastructure, and then the new courthouse project fund. So, very little of the commissioner's fund is general fund in your budget. Most of that is in a fund that's called non-departmental. About $5 million a year is non-departmental. Non-departmental funds may only be used for broad countywide projects. It is not used for your office. And then, the commissioner's office itself is about $2.4 million a year from the general fund, for a total budget for the commissioners of $38.5 million in 2019 and nearly $58 million in 2020. And the reason it's so high in the second year is work on the new courthouse project. So, as you see, some of the things that are in this office that change in next year are jail expansion is in 2019, and then the courthouse project in 2020, updates for equipment and furniture in this room, which will improve access by the public, and then increases to funding for the dispute resolution center, which is money that will reduce costs for the courts, and for the Visitor and Convention Bureau, which will enhance economic development in the county. So, I would be happy to answer any questions about the commissioner's budget.
Any questions about the budget?
No.
So, I'll look to the audience. See if there's anybody from the public would like to come to the podium to speak on behalf of the commissioner's budget. Seeing no one, do you have any comments, Romero?
No, I don't have any comments.
All right.
Any questions?
All righty. Moving on from the commissioner's budget, we're going to turn to the treasurer's budget and turn back to Robin for background on the treasurer's budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the office of the treasurer, we have treasurer Jeff Gadman with us today. Thank you. The treasurer manages public funds for the county and for small jurisdictions. So, we have quite a few of what's called agency funds that are managed by our county treasurer, including for our many school districts. I believe the treasurer manages funds for our schools. They receive our tax payments. So, if you remember earlier today, they receive that entire dollar and then send most of it out to the state and other local jurisdictions. The county retains a very small amount of the taxes received. And our treasurer pays the county's debt. So, for next year, the only change in the budget for the office of the treasurer is we have a grant program from the Washington Finance Officers Association, where we can have a summer intern, and that money would only be spent in the event that we receive the grant. And that's the only change in the treasurer's budget. The treasurer has a $1.2 million budget, roughly from the general fund, and then $7.5 million in 2019, $8.7 million budget in 2020 in total. And the difference between general fund and the total budget is the debt payments that the treasurer makes. Those are mainly debt payment funds.
Any questions about that?
No.
No? All righty. I'll turn to the public and see if there's any questions, or anybody from the public that'd like to come to the podium to address the treasurer's budget. Seeing no one, does the treasurer wish to make any comments?
If you have questions, if you have any answers, then I'll write them down.
Any questions? Okay. We're good then. So, next, we'll move on to the human resources department.
Okay. So, for human resources, we have with us today the interim director, Maria Aponte. She's with us. Thank you. Human resources is one of our internal service offices or departments, where their customer is other county offices and departments. So, human resources provides personnel services to our county offices. I would also mention that they support a few of the specialty commissions, such as the Board of Equalization, and the Salary Commission, and the Civil Services.
Services.
Thank you. Civil Services Commission to assist the sheriff in hiring. So, there, and our risk pool is in the human resources. So, that's pretty big. Their general fund budget is just under $2 million each year. The total budget, approximately $5.4 million. The human resources department, the restricted funds are for unemployment compensation, the insurance risk pool for the county, and our benefits administration fund.
Any questions about that?
No.
All righty. And I'll look to the public and see, and to the audience to see if there's anybody from the public that'd like to come to the podium to address the human resources budget. Seeing no one, anyone from the human resources that'd like, Maria, would you like to come to the podium to speak, or you don't have to?
No.
Okay. Any questions, Maria?
No.
No? Okay. No questions here. Thank you very much. So, I'll turn next to the central services department.
Yes. Central services is another of our internal service departments. We have with us this afternoon director Martin Casey and some of his team. Thank you for being here. So, central services provides maintenance of our facilities, equipment, fleet. They maintain our archive of records, both physical and electronic archives, digital, and they provide mail services within the county. And again, their customers are other county offices and departments. The changes in the central service budget are updates to internal service rates and capital improvement projects. We do those every year. One of the things I might mention about these funds is, in accordance with state law, our internal service funds are prohibited from making a profit. So, they can only charge out what it costs to provide these services. So, we update the rates every year. They move the information technology, which had been a unit within central services, is created as a new department. So, if anyone were to compare to prior years, they'd see a big drop in the amount of the budget. And this includes capital expenditures of $3.3 million in 2019 and $3.2 million in 2020 on projects on capital buildings, capital projects on county buildings and facilities. The total budget is $27 million in 2019, $20 million in 2020, and the restricted funds are capital facilities, maintenance, and operations, facility reserve account, where we save money for major projects, the buildings that we already own, facilities engineering. Those are the project managers who map out what we're doing for those big projects, if you will. Then ERNR, which is, ERNR stands for equipment rental and reserve, and actually, this is our fleet and large equipment. We have a maintenance fund for that and a ERNR replacement reserve. So, those are the pools of money, if you will, in central services.
Comments?
I do have a question for Robin. Why is it that the general fund is lined out? And that's different than all the other funds. Could you just explain that to the public, please?
Yes. The central services, the expenditures and the appropriation authority that the board enacts for central services out of these various restricted funds, it's not a direct appropriation from general fund. So, these services, in accordance with best practices for internal services, are performed and paid for out of a central restricted internal service fund, and then billed out to every office and department that uses those services. So, facilities are billed out on square footage. The cost of electricity is billed out based on the utility bills for the various buildings, the cost of, well, I'm going to say computers, but that's now in the IT reserve, but computers are billed out based on the number of computers that an office might have. The phone bill, based on the number of phones you have. It's all based on your use of the services provided by this department, and these internal service accounts are referred to somewhat like a revolving account. The money goes out, the money comes in, and it's got to all balance in the long run.
Good enough.
Okay. So, I'll look to the audience to see if there's anybody from the general public that'd like to come to the podium to address the central services budget. Seeing no one, I'll ask the director if there's any comments that he would like to make.
Sure.
Your call.
Thank you, commissioners. Martin Casey, your central services director, and I wanted to take this opportunity, since I realize this is going to be my last budget hearing before I assume my new role as Sunnyside City Manager in January.
It won't be your last budget, though.
It won't be my last budget by any stretch. Have many more to come. But I just wanted to acknowledge and express my gratitude for the lengthy process, and I know the enormous hard work that goes into building a budget for the county, both on part of the commissioners, as well as on the part of the staff who are here present, from the commissioner's office and from the auditor's finance team. Some tremendous work, and I very much have appreciated their support over the five and a half years I've been here. And thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
No.
You have gratitude for the length of the budget process? Glad to hear you write.
I have gratitude for the depth of preparation that goes into a quality budget.
Depth of preparation, yeah. Thank you, Martin. Thank you very much. Best to you.
Martin, the four years that we've been together, I absolutely want to thank you from my heart and from your professional standpoint. You've been there every single time I've needed you or the commissioners, both previous commissioners and this commission, and you are absolute professional. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, that brings us to everybody here in the general government. Is there any other comments that?
We do have one more department, and that is our brand-new information technology department. The director position is currently vacant, because it's brand-new. It hasn't even started yet, so we are recruiting. We are recruiting for an IT director. This department will ensure that the county's information technology systems and infrastructure are up to date and modern, and that they support the county's goals for each office and department in delivery of our services. The budget was pulled out, if you will, of central services, and then the additions to the existing budget are the addition of the cybersecurity capabilities. We're going to add a FTE and do some work around cybersecurity, which is crucial. And then, it also funds replacement of the county's website, which is badly needed. So, the total anticipated budget for this department is $10.8 million in 2019, $10.4 million in 2020. And I would just say that since this is a brand-new department, we're going to be balancing and making sure that we've done it right, and it may take a little tweaking over the first two years, but this is where we anticipate it to be today.
You bet. It's good news. Anything? Okay. Sure. All righty. So, that brings us to the final portion of the general government. Romero, did you have any comments? Romero? No? Robin? Nobody? Seeing nobody? So, this juncture of the process for the public hearing, I'm going to recess it and come back at six o'clock, 6:00 PM. back at 6:00, 6:00 PM, and where we'll continue with the capital facilities plan, otherwise known as CFP. So, at this time, I'm going to recess, and then, until 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.